Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. Welcome to our public work session. We will be voting, I mean, we will be not voting, but we will be noting our presence electronically. So if everyone could please note your presence at this time.
Six members of City Council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam City Manager, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Portsmouth City Council and Portsmouth City family. Our first presentation will be given by Dr. Nathan Woodard in regards to the Department of Behavioral Health Services and Service Care. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, Dr. Woodard.
Thank you, sir.
And, Dr. Woodard, if you could do me a favor, please, before you get started, if you could explain to the citizens and everyone why we are wearing this green ribbon today?
First of all, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, City Council members, Madam City Manager, good evening. The month of May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Thus, as Mr. Mayor said, we are representing Mental Health Awareness Month by wearing our green ribbon. A couple of weeks ago, Behavioral Healthcare Services put on our annual Youth Summit and Behavioral and Mental Health Awareness Activity, or Summit, which took place in the plaza right next to our children's museum. So I would like to say a special thank you to Dr. Benitez and his staff for their assistance. We had approximately 255 people to register on-site, so those individuals were able to get information about mental health, get information about resources in our city, also to get information from other providers that provide services here as well. And ultimately, if they had kids, they were able to visit our lovely children's museum. So I would like to say thank you to you all that were able to come out on that day and visit and see that awesome event that was put on. So thank you. Today, I'm going to discuss the services that we provide at Behavioral Healthcare Services here for the city of Portsmouth. We have three different units with Behavioral Healthcare Services. We have our short-term services, our long-term services, and our developmental disability services. First, what are short-term services? They consist of same-day access, mental health and substance use outpatient therapy, prevention services, medication management, medication assistance treatment, peer support services, shelter plus care program, project for assistance in transitioning from homelessness, and permanent supportive housing. Our same-day access program, formerly called Central Entake, is a program where in which individuals that are having a mental health crisis can walk in Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 2:00, and get an initial assessment to determine what needs they have and if we can meet those needs. If so, that individual is then referred to case management, medication management, therapy, and so forth. The biggest piece of same-day access, no appointment is needed. Individuals in our city can walk in anytime. The only thing they have to bring is proof of identification that they are a Portsmouth citizen, and then we take it from that point. Next, we have mental health, substance use disorder outpatient therapy. In this program, we have a group of licensed clinicians, LPCs and LCSWs, that provide therapy to our individuals. They provide individual therapy as well as group therapy. This services is provided to our children as well as adults and family members that will like to have therapy also. Our prevention services. Our prevention services focuses, focus on reducing suicide, underage drinking and smoking, and opiate use. They also provide information on HIV and AIDS prevention services. A lot of our prevention services, we actually go out into the community and provide. We provide these services at our local churches, at our schools, at our libraries, and at our parks and rec centers. Next, we have medication management. I'm happy to say we have a full compilation of psychiatrists onboard. We have two children psychiatrists and one adult psychiatrist. These psychiatrists provide medication management to youth, adolescents, and adults. These individuals may have been in the hospital and has been determined, once they're discharged back to the community, that medication can assist them to maintain in the community. Therefore, that's what our psychiatrists do on-site, is provide medication assistance. Next, we have our opiate replacement therapy. Most people know this program more so of our methadone clinic. These are persons that have been diagnosed with an opiate use disorder. So in this program, we provide methadone as well as suboxone, but we don't only provide the medication. We do wraparound services with them. We provide counseling, therapy, and case management, with the hope that they will continue to take their medications and to stay clean and to be an optimal citizen in our community. Our peer support services. This is a service that we started probably about six or seven years ago, and this service has been awesome. And it's just as it states, peers. These are individuals that are in recovery. So oftentimes, what we find is that these individuals can connect very well with those persons that are getting services from us, especially, say, during same-day access. You may have someone that's coming in that's in their pre-contemplation stage of change, meaning they have a problem, but I'm not quite sure if I need services. But that peer, because of what he or she went through, can have that one-to-one connection and discussion with that individual to let them understand what their story was and what their road to recovery was. And oftentimes, that person will then have the thoughts that, okay, let me at least try this service. So our peer services have been great, and we're looking at expanding that service even Next, we have our Shelter Plus Care Program. This is a program that we do in coordination with our CLC here in the city of Portsmouth. This program looks at housing individuals that have been chronically homeless per the HUD regulations. When I say chronically homeless, these people are on the street, they may be living in hotels, or they may be living two to three families in one apartment. Those are some of the criteria that HUD looks at when it says if a person is chronically homeless. So through this grant, we provide a subsidy as well as support services, so these persons can have permanent housing. Permanent housing. You think of Maslow Hierarchy of Needs. We're trying to get a person into services that their symptoms has exacerbated, and they don't know what to do. But then we're going to tell them, hey, you need medication, you need therapy, you need X, Y, and Z. But they're going to tell you, I have nowhere to stay. So once we can meet that basic need of housing, they are much more amenable to other services that we have. Next, we have our Path Case Management Service. We have a path case manager. This is also funded through HUD. This person actually goes out on the street every day and search for persons that are They don't have to have a mental illness. The only criteria is that they have to be homeless. He will connect with them, ask them a array of questions to see how we can assist with them. That may be bringing them into our services, that may be referring them to veteran services or other services within our community. Next, we have permanent supportive housing. This is one of the newer programs that we're starting at BHS that we just received funding from the State Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. This is similar to Shelter Plus Care. The only difference here is that individuals don't have to be chronically homeless. However, they have to be diagnosed with a serious mental illness or substance use disorder. So this opens up the possibility for us to house even more individuals that are in need. Next, we have our long-term services. Under our long-term services, we have mental health and substance use case management. Then we have our jail diversion case management, we have emergency services, we have Opportunity House, which is our psycho-social rehabilitation program, we have our Hampton Roads Regional Jail Programs, and lastly, another new program that we're just starting, our Assertive Community Treatment Services, which is also known as ACT Team. Mental health and substance use case management is services that are provided to adults, adolescents, and youth. The main focus of mental health case management is to support, link, and coordinate services for those persons that are recovering from a mental health and substance use disorder. For example, a lot of people that we serve may come out of jail or the state hospital and may not have benefits, may not have SSI, SDI, SSDI, or Medicaid. So our case manager will help them fill out those applications and follow up with them through the entire process until it's done. Next, we have our jail diversion case manager. Our jail diversion case manager focus on those persons that have had some contact with the legal system or are in jeopardy to be incarcerated. However, if it's a misdemeanor, we look at them coming into services instead. It's my belief that the last place that we need to have any person that is suffering from a mental health illness is in the jail. We want to support and provide services to them as much as we can. So this jail diversion case manager does just that. They do the same services that a regular case manager does, however, because a lot of the people that they are targeting are either at the magistrate's office or have just been arrested, their turnaround time to get them into services is much quicker. Next, we have our emergency services. Emergency Services is a program that provide emergency clinical assessments to persons that have symptoms, mental health and substance use symptoms that have exacerbated, that may need to be hospitalized. So our emergency services clinicians, who are all licensed staff, provide this initial assessment to determine if this person need to be hospitalized or if there is a least restrictive alternative. Most of the time, we can find that least restrictive alternative. It may be housing, it may be counseling, it may be therapy, but there are times that we do have to place these persons in a psychiatric facility. And this is the role of our emergency services staff. Next, we have Opportunity House, which is our psycho-social rehabilitation program. Within Opportunity House, they provide training and assistance through day support services in an environment designed to build confidence in those skills. These, too, are individuals that have been to our local hospitals or our state hospitals that don't have the ability possibly to live on their own or don't have the skills. So in this program, we teach them how to cook, how to clean, how to socialize with others, in the hopes, again, that they will be able to maintain in the community as independent as possible. Next, we have our Hampton Roads Regional Jail Programs. We have our community-oriented reentry program, which is our core program. Within this program, we have staff that provide counseling and therapy to inmates at Hampton Roads Regional Jail that have been diagnosed with a mental health or substance use disorder. These services are done more so in the therapeutic community, so the inmates assist in these treatment groups 100%. Then we have the forensic discharge planning program under this grant as well, where in which individuals that are transitioning out of jail, we assist them in getting connected to different services here in the city of Portsmouth. Next, we have our developmental disability services. The two main services under this umbrella is our support coordination, which is case management, as well as our supportive habilitation occupational program, or better known as the shop. And our intellectual disability case management services. We help individuals and families assess, access services and supports specific to their needs. The primary diagnoses of these individuals are intellectual or developmental disabilities. These are our, these, this is our population meaning that have waiver services. Waiver services meaning that they scored a certain level on the scale that they have now been diagnosed with an intellectual or developmental disability. Also, a person may have a physical disability. So we provide services to those persons under our ID, DD case management as well. Next, the shop, supportive habilitation occupational program. These persons as well are diagnosed with an intellectual or developmental disability, and we too help individuals learn the skills to access community resources and provide training and assistance through day support services. Similar to what we do at our other day programs, we do the same thing for those persons that are, that are diagnosed with an intellectual or developmental disability. As you just saw, there are a lot of services under the umbrella of Behavioral Healthcare Services. So one of the things that we have really pushed and tried to do hard is to market those services. We have a lot of people that know about our services, and a lot of those folks are folks that have used our services previously or family members, but there's still folk that don't know. So these are some of the areas or tools that we use to market our services. The city of Portsmouth website, Behavioral Healthcare Services webpage, Portsmouth Channel Television, PCTV, billboards. We really had a big campaign that dealt with suicide prevention, where in which we had our numbers plastered on the billboards and other contact information if someone had issues with suicide. Hampton Roads Transit Advertising on the side of buses, Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services website, 211 Virginia, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Coaster Virginia, which is NAMI, Portsmouth Department of Social Services Resource Manual, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, which is SAMSA, local radio advertisements, Health Planning Region 5 website, City of Portsmouth Public Library Prevention Services, City of Portsmouth Public Schools Prevention Services, that are prevention services, and lastly, Portsmouth Coalition of the Youth. So this is several areas that we do advertisement, but not all of them. Next, I want to talk about a new initiative that we are working on right now. This is the Behavioral Healthcare Services and Portsmouth Public Schools Collaboration. One of the things that we see in our public schools is a lot of issues dealing with trauma, depression, suicide of our kids and young adults. Traditionally, we, there have been services in our public schools that have been more supportive of nature. Some of these services are like therapeutic day treatment or intensive in-home. But we are in discussion with the public schools now to provide clinical services to our kids. These clinical services will be provided by a licensed mental health professional. We are looking at doing a pilot program, starting in the beginning of the school year, where the school will identify three schools, two middle schools, and one elementary school because we believe it's very important to capture this population as early as possible. So what we will be doing is providing individual counseling and therapy. And of course, we understand that we're providing this service to the kids and the schools, but guess what? They go home. So we will also provide opportunities for their family to come in and get family therapy and treatment at the same time. While we say, what about if this kid is in need of additional services, like case management or medication management? Because we are seeing them in the school system, we can easily refer them to our main services on King Street, where they will not have to be on any wait lists or anything. They can come right in and receive those services. Some upcoming behavioral healthcare services initiatives. One of the biggest ones that I'm so excited about is our mobile services unit. This is a program we started to think about in providing medications, medication assistance treatment, a methadone program. Although Medicaid is a payer of this service now, we still have individuals that can't come to our office. Unfortunately, Medicaid transportation is not as reliable as we would want it to be, or they don't have transportation, or they just don't want to come to that building. And that's okay, but guess what? They still need services. So what we're going to do with this mobile services unit is take this service to them. However, we're going to expand the services. We're not just going to do medication assistance treatment, we're going to do same-day access, psychiatric services, as well as therapy and counseling. We will start by providing this service twice a week, and as it goes, if we see that we need to expand it more, we're going to do just that. Next, expansion of our children's services. We have a beautiful building at 1811 King Street, but I'll be the first to say, our building is not kid-friendly. It is not kid-friendly. So what we're looking at is finding an alternative location to provide specifically our kids' services. We want to make it something that is warm and welcoming for them and for their families. So we are in the process of looking for additional properties where we can provide those services out of. As mentioned earlier, we have the collaboration with the Portsmouth Public Schools, as well as the new program with our permanent supportive housing. Next, we have our senior services. During the COVID pandemic, our seniors really suffered. Many of our seniors were left alone, and for, in many cases, for good reasons, to not contract COVID from their family members or friends. So a lot of our seniors became depressed, withdrawn. So one of the things that we're looking at doing with our senior services is helping them to come back. Our senior services will also be a psycho-social rehabilitation program, but targeting individuals from 60 and up. These may be individuals that don't have the desire to want to go out and walk on the tracks, or want to go and play basketball, or to do some other activities, but they like to be around their friends. They like to discuss some things that are going on in their lives. They want to discuss how COVID affected them. So this will give them an opportunity to have a safe space to do just that. So this is another program that we're looking at within the next 12 to 18 months of starting as well. One of the other programs that's not listed, and I really want to get some feedback, if I could, in reference to medication, it's medication elimination packets. It's called DEXTERRA. What we've done is order a couple thousand of these medication deactivation packets. There are packets where you can take old medication and put it in, and you put warm tap water inside it along with it. You close it, shake it up for a couple minutes, and it deactivates the active ingredients of that medication. And instead of having to take it to a pharmacy or to the police department or someone else, you just drop it in the trash can. You don't flush the medications down the toilet, or you don't just put the medications in the trash. So this is a program that we want to start, because if you've been to the hospital, if you've seen a doctor, if you had any illness, you have medications in your medicine cabinet. And if you're like me, once I get that element that I had, that I got that medication for before, I go back and use it again. But unfortunately, in the meantime, you may have young kids, teenagers, that see that oxycodone in your medicine cabinet that's been there for a year or two. So they're going to take it, they're going to use it. So they're going to take it, they're going to use it, and take it and use it with their friends. So this too is a way of us trying to reduce the opiate epidemic that we're currently in. So I really wanted to get some feedback in reference to if this could be something good that we do and doing a mass mailing to the citizens of Portsmouth and breaking it down into different sections and say, this quarter, we do it, excuse me, to zip code 23704. Next quarter, we look at another zip code, so forth and so on. Next, I'd like to talk about licensed group homes versus boarding homes. We hear a lot about licensed group homes. Licensed group homes are homes that are overseen and licensed by the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. These homes go through a stringent screening process and licensing process. Currently, there are 41 licensed group home providers in the City of Portsmouth. Of the 41 licensed group home providers, they operate 60 group homes within our city. These homes are inspected annually. If there is an incident that occurs at a location before the annual inspection, then the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services will conduct an investigation to determine what happened and what's the best course of action. So that's our licensed group homes. In contrast, we have boarding homes. Boarding homes, any private citizen can open a boarding home. They don't have to live in that home, or it can just be a home that they rent or own. Up to four unrelated individuals can reside in a boarding home. These homes are not licensed by any entity. So those are the biggest differences between licensed group homes and boarding homes. And as you see, I was able to give you the information towards the number of licensed group homes. I cannot do so for boarding homes because there's nowhere to search. Any questions?
Mr. Woodard, thank you so much for that information. We do have a couple of my colleagues who have questions, and the first one is Councilman Hugel. Sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Dr. Woodard, for a really comprehensive brief. I appreciate everything that you all are doing. At the Behavioral Health Fair, I also appreciated that your folks were giving away trigger locks. So some good things that were happening, and I appreciate that your folks were there and organized that. A few questions. First, it's not any secret that the Navy recently had some pretty publicized suicide issues, US Coast George Washington, and then the Mid-Atlantic Regional Maintenance Center. We've had several discussions at the mayor's Military Affairs Council about suicide and access to mental health services for our military. I assume that if I'm a active-duty service member or a vet living in Portsmouth, and I'm having trouble getting access to military medicine, I can access suicide prevention and some of the other mental health resources that you mentioned here. Is that true?
Absolutely, 100%.
Okay. Can you tell me, so in Shelter Plus and in permanent supportive housing, what kind of capacity do you have to accommodate folks and how much of that capacity is currently being consumed?
Well, with our Shelter Plus Care Program, we have 53 units. And I'm happy to say that we only have one vacancy. So as people move out, we have people that are ready to move in. Our permanent supportive housing program, we're still in the developing stages of that, but with that program, we will have another 36 units.
Okay, thanks. And the last couple of council meetings, we've had a non-agenda speaker who was asking for what support is available to victims or families of victims of violent crime. Can you specifically speak to that issue so we know how to answer that question on her behalf?
One of the things that we find that persons that have been through a traumatic event, they may be depressed, they may be having other issues such as paranoia and so forth. So these are diagnoses that we work with all the time. So persons that fall in this category can certainly come to Behavioral Healthcare Services and go through our same-day access program to have a screening and to come in services to provide whatever service that they would need, whether that be case management, counseling, therapy, medication management. We are also in the process of having NAMI to start a group back here in the City of Portsmouth. NAMI is the National Alliance of Mental Illness. Prior to the pandemic, they provided a group for traumatic issues as well as persons recovering from mental health and substance use disorder at Maryview Hospital, but due to the pandemic, they had to stop. So we're in the process of doing an agreement with them so they can provide that support group right at our main building.
Okay, thanks. And then just one comment on your marketing slide. I didn't see that you're marketing to civic leagues. I would suggest that you think about getting folks out to civic leagues. It's a lot of great information, and we just need to get the information out to our folks. So again, thanks for being here tonight.
Well, I'm glad you bring up that point because I had discussed it with Madam City Manager starting next month, that I'm in contact with the civic leagues throughout our city, and I personally would be going to do presentations to all of our civic leagues on services that we provide through Behavioral Healthcare Services.
Awesome, thanks.
You're welcome. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Woodard, for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
The concern has been that, it's no doubt that we have all of these services that are listed. The issue or concern has been getting that information out into the community to reach those who are marginalized, those who traditionally, because of cultural issues, have not really seen behavioral health care as an access point of help. That's very challenging, particularly in communities that are predominantly African-American, where you have seen trauma for centuries go unaddressed and questionable practices by government entities that provide that help. And that has been the concern, and as Councilman Hugel just mentioned about the Ms. Britt, who has come to several of our meetings, you probably have heard her speak. How are we getting that information out to marginalized communities, communities such as Portsmouth, which have some dynamics that I mentioned, poverty, culture? And what I see here is that we have a lot of great programs, but is it really reaching the community? The program, the same-day access, for example, you mentioned that that's available from 8:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and that's a same-day walk-in, anyone can come in, and that's at King Street.
Yes, sir.
So you have to have access to King Street. You have to know where Behavioral Healthcare Services is. And I'm hoping, and I'm hearing that it sounds like you are sort of changing the model some and getting it more into the community, the mobile. I think that's going to be very much needed to break away from the status quo and how it has usually been marketed. Another thing, with it being 8:30 to 2:00, what happens when someone has a crisis after 2:00 p.m.? What's available for that type of walk-in?
Well, if you have someone that has a crisis after 2:00 p.m., they will then be seen by one of our emergency services clinicians. Their services, our emergency services clinicians can provide the same service as our same-day access clinicians. The biggest difference, our emergency services clinicians are there 24 hours a day, 7 days a week.
And again, that's, they would have to, that's at King Street?
No, sir. No, sir. That's either at King Street, at Maryview Hospital, at the manager's office, and again, once we start our mobile unit, they'll be on the mobile unit too.
Okay. And the other issue with the marketing behavioral health care on page 11, I was wondering, with the amount of violence that persons experience and trauma, particularly with the shootings that occur in communities, the reset walk that the police have, when they do the reset walk, is Behavioral Healthcare Services, is that information that they are distributing to those households?
Yes, sir. Actually, whenever we do a reset walk, our prevention services participate, and our prevention services, again, will provide all the information of the services that we do. They'll also hand out gun locks as well as talk about opiate use. We will also distribute naloxone and also provide training on the spot for those persons that are in need.
And so that community, that's the one time that that interaction occurs, just with the reset walk?
No, we also have a program that we do along with fire and rescue that's called, that's our Crisis Intervention Team. This is a team that started approximately a year and a half ago. Anytime we have someone that has experienced an opiate use overdose, this team will go out to that community, they will meet the individuals at the hospital if they are hospitalized.
Well, I'm talking not opioid, but when there's gun violence, because you were talking about the reset walk.
Dr. Whitaker, one of the things that we did start implementing, so I'll just take, for example, the last situation we had in Portsmouth where a child was affected by gun violence. We provided the address, and if you want to speak to that, because we then reach out, we go to the family to have a conversation. What we're finding is, even though we go to the family, have a conversation, be able to assess, be able to discuss. The, I don't know if it's because they, I can't say that they don't want it. I just think that the environment we're in and how it may have been perceived to some is that you must be saying something's wrong with me, and how we internalize stuff versus saying, let me talk about it, let's have a conversation. I think sometimes when we go, when we talk about behavioral health, it becomes the perception of, do you think something's wrong? And so we are challenged with that. We are also looking at another office where we are trying to lease another space, as Dr. Woodard mentioned. And so we're trying all types of, we're opportunities to try to reach out to our citizens, even by knocking on their door and saying, we understand what happened, you know, let us help you. And so the challenges that we're facing is that they don't, some people are not receptive to it. So we're trying to figure out a barrier to break to get them more involved and to say, we're here for you. What can we do? And that's just one of our challenges.
Yeah, I think, like I said, I think some of that is cultural, and so the more education and getting out involved, it's a massive, it's a massive issue. And so I appreciate, Dr. Woodard, you sharing this information, and I hope that we are sensitive to making sure that it's beyond, that the model has to branch out into the community more to really reach those who have been marginalized by this. Thank you.
You're welcome. I really appreciate that point, Dr. Whitaker, and I think that one of the biggest changes that we're seeing that we have to make with our services is that we have to meet people where they are. It's not about them coming to us and fitting into this pretty box that we have decided that they should be. That's all we have treatment. It's truly about us meeting them where they are.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Woodard, for the presentation. You know, this is going to be my favorite packet to keep close by hand. Just a couple of questions. You know, I'm always wondering where the cost is coming from for the medication management program and the opiate replacement therapy program. Do y'all have grants for that, or where actually does that funding come from, and about how many, or how many dollars are used to treat patients, individuals?
These funds, the majority of these funds come from the State Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. These are mandated programs that they ask behavioral health authorities and community service boards to provide. In addition, some of these funds, the opiate abatement funds that the localities receive, we're utilizing some of those funds as well. Currently, with the medications, medication assistance treatment program, we are serving, I would say approximately 185 individuals, which is awesome. Prior to Medicaid paying for this service, I think that we were barely at 90. So with Medicaid paying for this program, it opens up the resources and availability for persons that in other instances wouldn't have gotten the service.
Absolutely. Okay. And then the Shelter Plus Care Program, I know that's HUD-funded, but how do they identify housing for persons who are chronic homeless?
This is done through our COC. Our COC is our Continuum of Care Program that we couple with other housing programs throughout the City of Portsmouth, and they contact our housing hotline. So it's not a service that's specifically for behavioral health consumers, behavioral health consumers. Anybody in the city that needs that service can call the Housing Crisis Hotline and discuss what type of housing that they will need. At that point, if it's Shelter Plus Care, they'll be funnelled to us. If it's domestic violence, they will be funnelled to the HUR Shelter, so forth and so on.
Great, awesome. And then my last question, as the person who is the liaison to the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, I hear about the CORE program, and I know that they get a lot of participants, so they apply. Can you just explain for the council and the audience how those persons participate in that program? Because I know that Portsmouth is not the only one that has it. It's our other five jurisdictions that participate as well, so we're not only providing services to inmates who are Portsmouth residents, it's other localities as well.
Yeah, so those individuals are identified by jail staff through their internal assessment. So once their medical do an assessment to determine that this person may need mental health services, then they refer them to us, and then we provide services in a therapeutic community environment. Again, we do crisis services, we do individual as well as group counseling and therapy, but those persons are identified by jail staff.
Right, and I've heard great successes to that, so congratulations to you and your team participating with that. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Dr. Woodard. This is probably the most comprehensive BHS presentation I've seen since my time on council, so it's very good. I do have a few questions. The Shelter Plus Care Program, there's no time period once someone's in that program, is that correct?
Exactly. This is also permanent housing for individuals. The only criteria is that they must continue to abide by HUD rules and regulations. Outside of that, it's permanent.
I know, I know we know how many individuals take advantage of that service. Do we attract? Do we attract the success stories of people once they leave the housing and the treatment?
Absolutely. But I will say, that's very few and far between. Because it is permanent housing, the majority of people stay. So what we have had to do over the years is look at going back to HUD to ask for additional funding so that we can increase the number of slots. But for those persons that have transitioned out, we do have some, some data on them.
What, what would make them transition out?
They may find a job in another state, or they may feel as though that they want their own place. And they are no, they are not in need of that type of subsidy moving forward. So it may be various reasons why.
Well, and, and what, what leads me to the next question is, do we assist them in being rehabilitated to if they're physically capable and mentally capable, capable of getting employment?
Absolutely. With our Shelter Plus Care Program, we have one and a half case managers that as long as they are in this program, that case manager follows them through the duration and teaches them how to budget their funds and teaches them how to grocery shop and teaches them how to read their lease to make sure that everything is accurate and appropriate and so forth. So, yes, sir.
Okay, so, so there is training and assistance in that area. That's great.
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned the Crisis Hotline. That's something else that needs to be publicized, you know, along with the other information here. Someone mentioned, will you do after two P. M.? My question would be, will you do at two A. M. when, when you find a need? Is that the hotline that you would call, the Crisis Hotline?
Yes, sir. You can call the Crisis Hotline, or you can call nine eight eight, which is the National Crisis Hotline as well. And both of those are twenty-four seven.
And there again, I, I think those are two critical numbers that people need to have, maybe even do a refrigerator magnet. Everybody's refrigerator is the, the source of all phone numbers nowadays. So, so people can keep that handy, because, you know, a lot of people run into situations like that that they need to point someone in the right direction or call on their behalf. So that, that would be great. And I look forward to the marketing and getting that information out. I think that's, that's a fine way to make people aware of all these services. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Councilman Tillid, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Dr. Wood, for this very comprehensive presentation. Portsmouth has a lot of great programs that are here to aid and to assist people in different parts of their lives. It was mentioned that there is a lack of, I guess, connecting to the community, you know, getting them educated on what we do have to offer. And I was looking at the list, and just as a suggestion, adding churches or faith-based organizations to that list. I know a lot of people, they turn to churches when they're in different types of crisis. And so a lot of times churches don't have the resources they give with their own. And so I think that would be good, good information for churches to have as well. Councilman Moody made mentioning to the tracking of the success of the housing program. What is the tracking and success look like for the mental health piece? A lot of times, you know, you have people that come in, they might just come in for one appointment because they're experiencing something in that one moment. But what do we do when, let's say, they've come here, they express their, their concerns, and then they go off? And are we still in contact with them? Are we still connecting them in other resources, trying to get them to come back? Or are we following up?
Absolutely. Great question. And this is where our peer services come in. If we have a person that comes in for an initial appointment, and for whatever reason feels as though that what we had to offer may not have been for them, and they don't come back for the next appointment, automatically that will trigger our peer services to reach out. They'll reach out to discuss, how did the appointment go? Was it an, a welcoming environment? Was it a comfortable environment? Did your intake clinician ask you questions that made you feel okay? Or did they say things that triggered you? So our peer services is very important when that happens. So, yes, they will follow up with those individuals and try to re-engage them into services. Sometimes it works, and sometimes it doesn't.
All right. The Portsmouth Public Schools collaboration, I think that's phenomenal for us to have licensed mental health professionals in our schools. Especially in today's age with COVID, kids getting back into the groove of things, and then violence and all those other things. And then also the piece where we're tapping into the families, because kids can only be as strong as the support of their, of their family. So I think that that's, that's phenomenal. You also spoke about the de-innovation of medication. I think that's a great idea. A lot of times, people get their hands on medications, whether they steal it or whether somebody passes away, and it's just left there. And so those things end up in our streets. And so I think that would be a great program, especially once we educate the community on what to do with it. I think that would be a huge asset, hopefully to reduce the number of substance abuse cases that we have in our cities. I would love to see where that goes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Madam, madam manager, did you want the floor? Then Dr. Whitaker, sir. Did you want to say something?
No, we just, I was going to the next, because we have a lot of information to cover.
I understand. Dr. Whitaker, Dr. Whitaker has the floor, though. He asked for the floor, so.
This is real quick, Dr. Wood. I noticed you mentioned on the upcoming initiatives, you said the timeline was twelve to eighteen months. Is that a budget issue?
So, so basically, one of the initiatives I'm looking at for the city, for any time we start a project from start to finish, it doesn't need to, in my opinion, we don't need to drag this stuff out forever. I want to be able to have a plan, get it together, and get it done. And so for me, I look at whatever we're doing as a team and say, can this be done between twelve and eighteen months? And if we can't, why not? And what do we need to do? Now, some construction projects, again, are long, but some things like Dr. Whitaker was addressing, we're in the process of those things that could take, you know, twelve to eighteen months just because of staffing, just because school starts in September. We need a timeline and a deadline and a result to get it done. So I've charged all my departments for that.
Okay, so these are initiatives, funds are identified to, they're not unfunded mandates or anything like that? We identify funds that can cover?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And then the last thing, Dr. Wood, and this can't deal with tonight. The online counseling that people have turned to since COVID, is there any way later you can come back with what are some caveats or things that citizens should watch out for before they just jump into using online counseling? Some type of guidance that might help persons with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
And Dr. Wood, real quick, before you sit down, on behalf of council, we want to personally thank you and your team for the wonderful and successful Mental Health Day event. My wife and I were able to attend, and we got that free ice cream, too, so it was a good thing.
Thank you, sir.
Madam manager, you have the floor.
Our next presentation is by Julia Chop from Zoning and Planning. But what I will ask council is, as Ms. Chop goes through, we have the, at the end is where we're going to our consensus of what you want to, how you want to direct us to finalize and to complete. So I just wanted to make sure she has enough time to go through everything.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, mayor, madam vice mayor, members of council. I'm Julie Chop, principal planner with the planning department. I'm glad that we're, we're taking the time to go through council's questions and concerns regarding the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. C A dash twenty-two oh one is a series of proposed changes to various sections within the city's zoning ordinance. So in the past, council has approved similar code amendments that included many revisions to multiple sections of the ordinance. These changes are based on staff observations of how the standards function in practice, as well as from feedback from the community, and are determined following analysis and assessment to ensure that they are appropriate. If council is not interested in or comfortable with any of the proposed changes, council can remove them from consideration and vote on the remaining C A dash twenty-two oh one amendments. The following slides address the questions that were raised at the April eleventh city council meeting related to the five amendments that are listed on this slide. Staff will then take additional questions that council has about the amendments. And in order to ensure that council is comfortable with including these proposed changes, we will ask council for a consensus on these five ordinance changes at the end of this work session, as mentioned by city manager Terry. I want to start out by providing a brief background on density. Density is measured by dividing the number of housing units by the acreage of the land. So, for example, if a one-acre property contains forty residential units, the density is forty units per acre. This image was borrowed from the internet to help visualize what different densities look like in real life. The larger the number of units that are permitted per acre, the higher the density, and vice versa. Lower density includes single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings, also known as duplexes. Medium density typically consists of three-to-four-family or townhouse dwellings. High density is generally characterized by multi-story, multifamily apartments. Higher-density development increases the number of taxpaying citizens that live within an area. Businesses are attracted to areas of higher density because they provide more customers and more employees. Increasing the housing supply creates future home buyers by giving them property to rent and decreases the cost of existing housing because of supply and demand. Density is the way to spur the private sector to build needed housing. The denser housing is, the less it costs the city to provide services to those residents. Density is also equitable. Increasing density helps to remove historic injustices and allows more people to live in desirable neighborhoods where they benefit from a deconcentration of poverty and increased racial integration. According to a twenty-seventeen Virginia Commonwealth University study, density does not increase crime or hurt property values. At the April eleventh meeting, council members asked how increased densities were determined. Staff did not arbitrarily pick the numbers for these proposed increases. Staff examined the existing multifamily developments in the downtown and found, found that the number of existing apartment complexes are well above the current density standards, as shown in this chart on the slide. The current maximums also do not account for buildings, for building a taller building on a smaller parcel. A good example is the eighty-one-unit Seaboard Building at One High Street. The Seaboard Building was built at a density of a hundred and thirty-one dwelling units per acre. The proposed increase in the T-six sub-district to a hundred and thirty-two units per acre would bring this development into conformity with the zoning ordinance and allow developers to construct similar projects. Thus, the proposed density numbers were strategically selected to align the zoning ordinance with what the market is telling us is desirable to build in Portsmouth, which in turn encourages investment. The downtown and waterfront areas are Portsmouth's major centers of activity and some of the city's most valuable assets. Even though the majority of this area is within the regulated flood zone, the city's vision of a vibrant downtown with lots of residents and businesses remains. Redevelopment within the flood zone is subject to compliance with the city's flood protection ordinance. Oftentimes, this results in elevating residential units out of the flood zone or locating flood-proofed commercial spaces on the ground floor with residential units above. One example is the current redevelopment of the Professional Building at five forty-five, five forty-five High Street, as pictured on this slide, which will include eight commercial spaces on the ground floor and forty-two residential units above. The city is also actively working on plans and projects to protect against flooding. For example, the tide gauges that have been installed on outfall pipes have reduced flooding in many areas of the city. A question was asked about decreasing the required open space in the downtown area. Decreasing the required open space will not decrease the quality of living in these areas. It is meant to maximize development where there is limited land to redevelopment, to redevelop, while still providing open space for all to enjoy. Currently, in zoning districts outside of the downtown, the required open space is ten percent of the lot area. In the T-three and T-four sub-districts, the standard is twenty percent, and fifteen percent of required open space is required in T-five. It doesn't make sense for the most intensely developed areas of the city to dedicate more open space than the less densely zoned parts of the city. Historically, cities set aside parks and green spaces because parcels in dense areas cannot provide enough open space access to residents. If you think of Festival Park outside of the Portsmouth Pavilion or even Central Park in New York City versus the open space at an apartment complex. Combining the required small amounts of green space from individual parcels into a larger area makes for a place that is more accessible to all people and that can supply a larger number of activities. This approach is also more equitable as individual open spaces on private property cannot be enjoyed by anyone other than residents of that property. This slide shows many of the public open space and parks that are available or will soon be available to downtown residents. The city maintains these areas to give residents equitable access to recreational opportunities, increase property values, spur local economies, combat crime, and protect the city from environmental impacts. The proposed density maximums for the N M U and G M U zoning districts were determined through an assessment of each of the zoning districts to ensure there is a logical density progression from the less dense to more dense zoning classifications. N M U and the urban residential U R zoning district currently have the same maximum density. N M U was established as a more intense zoning district than U R, so it should have a higher density. Increasing the density in the G M U to thirty-two units per acre provides a more appropriate progression for the intended density, intended intensity for the G M U. The segment of High Street running through the Innovation District is predominantly zoned N M U and G M U. Because the Innovation Overlay District is a targeted revitalization area, we want to make it easy to attract new investments. Allowing additional density will attract businesses and future residents. For example, this slide shows the proposed multifamily development at eleven-hundred High Street in the N M U zoning district within the Innovation Overlay. Only forty-four units were permitted on the one-point-eight-two-acre site at the current twenty-four units-per-acre maximum density. The proposed building is only on a quarter of the project, of the property, and the applicant still had trouble getting to the desired fifty units. More people attracts more businesses and investment to an area that the city has prioritized, which in turn attracts more people and improves the city's economy. Several questions were asked about the infrastructure and the ability to support this increased density. Portsmouth is largely built out, is largely built out, and developers benefit from having water and sewer infrastructure in place to serve any part of the city, as evidenced by the map of the sewer and water lines on this slide. The water system, as it currently operates, meets the Virginia Department of Health requirements. Due to the piecemeal design of our infrastructure and because the demand on these services varies widely, depending on the use and the layout of the development, we don't have a model that is able to predict. a model that is able to predict the demand of a full buildout of these areas. However, developers understand that if the demand of their project exceeds the current capacity, they are responsible for any needed upgrades, not the city. Many parts of the city have benefited from recent city infrastructure update efforts. As part of the downtown master utility plan, water and sewer infrastructure was upgraded and storm drains were rehabilitated in the downtown. In addition, the city was awarded a nineteen-point-three-million-dollar grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation that will include the complete overhaul of all physical infrastructure along the High Street corridor within the Innovation Overlay District. This includes water and sewer services, storm drains, roads, sidewalks, pedestrian, crosswalks, and handicap ramps. In terms of schools, the Portsmouth Public Schools Office of Research confirmed that Portsmouth does not have a student generation formula, so we do not know how many school-age children are generated by different types of residential development. Ultimately, it has not been necessary for Portsmouth to conduct such an analysis because most of the existing schools have more than enough capacity to accommodate growth. Based on the enrollment numbers on the past five years shown on this slide, it appears the schools in the downtown and that serve the downtown and Innovation Overlay areas have the building capacity to accommodate additional students. It should be noted that there's more to the ability for a school to accommodate students beyond the building capacity. In terms of fire and rescue services, the 2018 Portsmouth Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services Study found that the current eight-station model provides adequate coverage for all areas of the city, as seen on the map on the slide. Police departments nationwide are struggling with staffing shortages, including the Portsmouth Police Department. Basing police staffing on population doesn't reflect an agency's actual workload. The proposed new public safety facility would result in better response times because of its central location and would likely increase the ability of the police department to recruit and retain officers. Having so much development demand that it stresses infrastructure would be a good problem for Portsmouth to have, and it appears that we have the resources and plans to handle The map on this slide shows vacant properties within the T-four, T-five, and T-six downtown sub-districts. The chart shows how many units could be accommodated if all of the vacant parcels were developed with residential development under the existing maximum density, as well as the proposed maximum density. It needs to be noted that not every square foot of these undeveloped areas will or should be developed with residential construction. Increasing the residential intensity in the downtown will create needed quality and modern housing for shipyard and port workers, servicemen and women, teachers, public safety personnel, and other workers. Allowing more housing will help revitalize the area into a vibrant urban center and spur private investment in retail and restaurant amenities. The Economic Development Department and Authority has designated the downtown waterfront areas of Crawford Bay and the municipal complex as redevelopment-focused areas. Multiple city studies have shown that there is a strong market desire for more housing units downtown, and that increasing the number of people downtown would significantly help existing businesses by creating more customers. We have current developers that have put their project on hold with the hope of utilizing this density increase. We almost had a developer walk away from a project in Portsmouth because the current density maximum did not allow enough units for it to be cost-effective. If too much development occurs in the future, council does have the option to deny use permit and rezoning requests or to amend the density requirements in the future. This slide shows a map of the vacant properties within the Innovation Overlay District that are zoned GMU and NMU. The chart shows how many units could be accommodated, if all the vacant parcels were developed with residential development under the existing maximum density and the proposed maximum density. Again, not all vacant area will or should be used for residential development. Multifamily developments in this area require a city council-approved use permit, so council has the option to deny the request if the proposed density for a project was too high. This would be a fair and equitable distribution of resources. Existing and new residents would have access to the infrastructure, while future residents that might cause an excess demand on that infrastructure would be prohibited from doing so. The Innovation Overlay District was established to serve as a catalyst for redevelopment in the uptown area. Innovation districts need dense, walkable, and highly-connected areas because these are the types of places that attract entrepreneurs and younger residents. Increasing density creates the environments needed to spark organic conversations that encourage sharing and collaboration, which are essential to generating real innovation. Moving away from density, another question was asked about the current two-year expiration of certificate of appropriateness, and why it was not two years rather, or why it was not five years rather than two years. So this amendment was proposed, or is proposing to add language to the existing text that accounts for the General Assembly granting an extension of land use approvals. The General Assembly actually did grant an extension of all land use approvals, including COAs, until July 1st, 2025. So this amendment was not proposing to change the existing two-year expiration of COAs, but if council would like to change the time limit, that would have to be done through a separate code amendment process. Another question had to do with how the two-acre minimum lot size was determined for the shipping container/chassis storage yard. Currently, shipping container/chassis storage yards are only permitted in industrial IN or light industrial zoning districts, and they always require a use permit that is approved by city council. There's also a number of use-specific standards that ensure that the use is appropriate. This amendment is proposing to add a two-acre minimum lot size requirement to these use-specific standards for this use. The minimum two-acre lot size is a minimum baseline that allows sufficient movement within the site and leaves smaller industrial parcels open for more productive uses. Because this use is not as economically viable as other industrial uses, and because the city has a limited amount of industrial property, an assessment was conducted to evaluate where this use could be located. Staff looked at the acreage of vacant parcels that are zoned IL and IN, and determined that there are enough two-acre and above parcels, especially in close proximity to the port, to allow the development to occur without overly restricting this use. So this completes my presentation regarding the questions and concerns that were raised at the April 11th council meeting, and I'll now stand by for any questions from council before we go through the consensus slides of the five amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Chopp. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Chopp, for a very comprehensive follow-up. There's a lot of good information, a lot of good data in this slide deck that answered nearly all of my density questions. So if you can go back to slide fourteen, please. And this is a comment rather than a question. So this is the Innovation District. We've had several meetings sponsored by the planning department to discuss what's going to happen in this Innovation District. And importantly, you pointed out that the grant, the race grant that we have to address some of the upgrades in this district can be used to upgrade the capacity of our utilities in that district. And so I just want to make certain that we don't lose that in our vigor to upgrade roads and sidewalks. If we want to build out, it would be wonderful if we had eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven residences there that this new density would allow, but we got to make sure that the utility capacity, particularly water and sewer, are sufficient to handle that. So that's a comment, and I'll encourage folks, if you care about what's happening in the Innovation District, the next sessions are on June the 6th in the afternoon and in the evening, another opportunity for your voice to be heard. Go back one more slide, please, to slide thirteen. This is the comment and the question. So if you tally those numbers, under the current density rules, if we built out everything that could be residential, that's two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-one new residences in downtown that don't exist today. We changed the density rules as you're proposing, that two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-one increases to four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-four. That's four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-four new homes in downtown. Wouldn't that be wonderful if we had four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-four new homes? Because we need the critical mass of people in downtown to draw groceries, pharmacies, docks in the back, those kind of things. So that's what we want to do. Now, we got to make sure, though, that if you're the four-thousandth of those four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-four residents that move downtown, that you're going to have water and your sewer isn't going to back up. So I promised the city engineer I would ask this question. I'm going to ask it. So, Madam City Manager, if you would please pass my question to the city engineer, I just want confirmation that we are confident that with the upgrades that we're doing in the water and sewer and storm sewer in the downtown district, that we're not setting ourselves up to fail with our public utilities in downtown.
Deputy City Manager, Engineer James Wright, could you please kind of respond the same way you did last week when this question was proposed?
Sure thing. Good afternoon, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. In response to Councilman Hugel's question, we have a number of large diameter water mains serving the downtown area and also the Innovation District, from sixteen inches to twelve inches to ten inches, which are typically our larger mains outside of our transmission main. We have, coming from our Frederick Boulevard pump station, a twenty-inch line that serves all of downtown, coming from our booster station, and this area is also served by the Broad Street tank. So we will meet our minimum required for waterworks operators for this increased density, and we have the sewer capacity in place as well.
And storm sewer will be okay once we complete the new pump station in Old Town?
Storm sewer, the pump station in Old Town is addressing the second component of the flooding issues that you're having downtown. The tidal issue's been addressed by the seawall and the tide gate. The pump station's going to address that when the tide gates close, water can't get out. That's what the pump station's for, by state code. Every development has no net increase, so the pump station or any development isn't going to have any impact on the pipes that are underground. The issue with the pipes that are underground is what criteria were they developed to, and so that's what we'll be looking at as we go to upgrade drainage infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. I think with all the work that's been done here, I'm certainly ready to give you the thumbs up on all of this, so I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chopp. I'm always concerned when you're seeing a lot of crowding into one area. It is a substantial increase. It's something like forty, forty-six percent when you look at, I believe that's page fourteen, that increase in the number of units. And also, in relation to what was just talked about as far as the infrastructure, does that take into account, we are in an area where we're seeing the rising in the water. And so how has that been factored in as far as what we're doing? But I am concerned about the number of units that we're putting in one place. I think that it's a win-win for developers. I don't know if it's a win-win for the city. Now, the other issue on page eleven, where it speaks to the issue with the schools, if we're talking about bringing in the number of homes or apartments, persons, I know that the schools have the physical capacity based on your chart, but we don't even have the access to the teachers that are needed for what we have now. So even though there may be a physical capacity that is there, there's also the human resource capacity as far as finding the teachers that will be necessary to staff. And so the physical issue doesn't address that larger concern. And then how are we going to address that, which I don't know if there's been a discussion with the school system? You know, are you going to address that based on class size, the teachers? And so I think that before we just look at these numbers from a physical standpoint, that it needs to be addressed from human resource. But my bottom-line philosophical thought is that whenever we start crowding people into areas like this, it's generally not good. Also, I would like, if the city manager would, you quoted some data, and I assume you were quoting from research, the relationship between density and equity. If you would, I assume that was from some research that you had. Could you forward that to council, city manager, so that we can have? I would like to see what source you're quoting from there.
Sure.
Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Chopp, for the presentation. I do have a question, once I have your attention.
Oh, yes, I'm listening.
That's all right. My question, getting back to the utility piece of it, I think I heard you correctly in saying we have no way of measuring the maximum capacity as we increase the density, but if that capacity's exceeded, it'll be up to the developer to pick up the slack.
Correct.
Well, if I'm a developer, I would think, question I would have on my development going into it would be, can y'all accommodate, can the city accommodate my needs? And I point out on Effingham where Holly Cove was constructed, I know once that was under construction, there was a question about the water pressure, and I think they had to provide some additional capacity themselves at their expense to make sure the facility had the proper water pressure. So I guess my question is, are other developments, and that price, that cost wasn't factored into their initial pro forma on the facility? So I guess my question is, are we going to run into this sort of thing? Do we have the water pressure? I know we got the, our engineer, Mr. Wright, said we can get the water there, but we're going to have adequate pressure. For instance, the Professional Building is a good example. Are they going to be met with that same situation? Are other developments going to be met with that?
I would say potentially. We're required to provide a minimum pressure, and that's what we're required by regulation. So we require what we need to provide for all waterworks operators, so that's what we provide to the meter. If they need more than that, they have to accommodate that on-site. So what you'll see is, anybody who needs fire protection, they have to add a booster pump to get up to those higher floors. What that is, is no one, at least in the twenty-five years that I've been here, is provided with calculations or anything that shows how someone developing their on-site fire protection. There's a note on the building plans that says, "will be designed in accordance with whatever the standard is," but you never get to see those or sign off on or anything to that nature, so. So I would say for anything that goes up that needs additional water pressure, they're going to have to provide something, most likely a booster pump or something on-site. And at that point, it's, you get to the point is, it's a life, it's a life safety issue.
Right. Is it up beyond one story, two stories, three stories?
It depends on, it depends on the building. So you, it's a pressure drop. You lose pressure across the meter, you lose pressure across the backfill prevention, the run of pipe bends, things of that nature. Everything causes a loss in pressure, so as you go up, you have more losses. You need more pressure.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Julie Chopp, for the presentation. Question on slide seven regarding the D1 density regarding the flood-prone areas. So you're saying that the ground floor residential development must be elevated. Is there any cost that developers or businesses will be, that will be available to them, should they have to make those types of changes to their plan?
I believe that's also an expense that would be up to the developers. So in this situation with 545 High Street, the developer opted not to put residential on the ground floor because it would cost a pretty sum to elevate the building to make that possible. So they are proposing commercial on the bottom floors with residential above.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Was Ms. Chopp about, was she about to say something?
Yeah, we're going to go through our, but you have a question.
Okay, yeah. And this is for council as well. Ms. Chopp, that the assumption is that these stores and businesses will come with increased density. But how do you know that they will not come with the present density because there are no present buildings down there? The apartments or dwelling places that are planned, they're not there. So how is it that you are assuming that they will only come if we increase the density? Now, again, the developers probably want the increased density because it becomes more profitable, but I don't know if that necessarily means that we have to, again, crowd people in order for those businesses that I heard mentioned that will come if we build it. But how do we know that if we build it at present density, that that will not attract businesses? So I'm just not convinced that it's the density at the maximum level that would attract businesses, because we don't have anything there now built at the present density to confirm that.
So we, I think there are, the 1100 High Street is a good example where they were not able to meet the density that they desired for that area. So a lot of these, so a lot of what we look at is, you know, the progression of one zoning district's density to the next, but also what the market is, you know, telling us and what multiple, what the housing study has told us, what economic studies have said is that we need additional housing units within the city, and that will in turn cause businesses to come to the area so that, you know, they can utilize the new customer base.
Right. I'm not doubting that you need more housing units. My question is, do you need the housing units at the increased density that you're requesting? That's, because you're going to have housing units there one way or the other, whether it's under the present density or the increased density. So I agree with that.
Okay.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So just to comment to your question, as I understand it, there are already buildings in the downtown district that are grandfathered in because they have higher residential density because they were built a long time ago, and so they already exceed the current zoning ordinance for density but were grandfathered in, true?
Correct.
Yeah, so there's already some in the downtown that exceed the current density numbers. I think the approach to incrementally increase the density and not go to the maximum possible density, I mean, if you build a 20-story facility on a small footprint, that would far exceed the density numbers that we're talking about here. So I think it's prudent to kind of creep up on the density increase, and my concern was, is doubling the density creeping up on it? But with the analysis that I think I've seen here and understanding what's already in downtown, that's already been grandfathered into the old zoning ordinance, my sense is that you all have done your homework so that we'll be okay by changing the density the way we have outlined here.
Thank you. So can we go now and move forward into the consensus portion of the zoning?
Yes. Okay. So the first item that we, amendment that we discussed was increasing the downtown T4, T5, and T6 max density.
In the reason.
Excuse me. Oh, the reasoning would be to provide additional housing and residence. I'm sure, I'm not sure how we do this, just, do we have a consensus?
Yes, we just raise our hand. If you're in a positive, just raise your hand in support of.
Okay.
And four is the, is the.
Okay. Okay. The next one is to reduce the D1 sub-district's minimum open space satisfied requirements, and the reasoning for that is to match the standard for the rest of the city. And the next one is to add a two-acre minimum lot size for shipping container/chassis storage yards, and the reasoning for this is to avoid this use, development of this use on smaller lots within the city. The next one is to increase the NMU, GMU, and NMU and GMU Innovation Overlay max density. The reasoning would be to help revitalize these areas and increase the housing stock. Okay. And the last one that we discussed was indicating that a special exception use permit and a COA can be extended if this is granted by the General Assembly, and the reasoning for this is to ensure that the zoning ordinance aligns with the Code of Virginia. Okay. Okay. So from my, from my viewing up here, it appears that there was the consensus on all five of these. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chopp, for your work on this area, and thank you to the department and staff. Very much appreciated. Madam Manager, you have the floor.
That ends my portion of the presentations for this meeting.
Do we have city council?
I just want to go over the agenda items quickly so that everybody is aware of what we're voting on this evening. For the City Managers' report, 23-177, adoption of ordinance accepting 50 cent of commercial of, I'm sorry, of community development block grant income. Item 23-178, adoption of ordinance accepting class action settlement funds in the amount of $22,414.3. 23-179 is adoption of ordinance, ordinance accepting grant funding in an amount of $5,373.52. Ordinance 23-180, adoption of ordinance accepting flooding, fund of flood mitigation, a flood mitigation grant in the amount of $225,000. 23-181, adoption of ordinance accepting developmental disability residential support funds in the amount of $9,240. 23-182, accepting an ordinance for transitional housing program services, funding in the amount of $389,327.47. 23-183, adoption of ordinance accepting the, with appreciation, a donation of $100 to the Department of Social Services. 23-184, adoption of ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $12,500 from the Department of Social Services. 23-185, adoption of ordinance accepting overtime funding in the amount of $223,025 for the Department of Social Services. 23-186, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve a change order of 25% of contract pricing of construction of exterior renovation and HVAC improvement for the neighborhood facility. 23-187, adoption of a resolution authorizing a grant variable width for utility easement. That's, I'm finished.
Thank you, ma'am. And Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, for our city manager, on 23-186, what does that 25% represent in dollar figures?
I don't have that, I'm sorry, written right here, but I can provide it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, ma'am. In an interest of time we do have, we will forego our council liaison reports. We do have a closed meeting request, and I would ask the vice mayor to read the motion for our closed meeting, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.233711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for employment and the performance of appointees specifically regarding the position of city manager and B, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.23711A1, for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for appointment to boards and commissions.
Second.
Would all of my colleagues please vote electronically?
This item is adopted, six-zero.
We are in closed session. We do have a need to come out of closed session, so Madam Vice Mayor, if you would read the motion, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Second. I would ask my colleagues to please vote electronically.
The motion is adopted, six-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will take a four-minute break and reconvene our regularly scheduled council meeting at 7:30.